Norrell.
Schubert.
Here.
Barrero.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Sepuentes.
Here.
Arroyo. Absent. Olivas.
Here.
LaShay. Absent.
Okay. We do not have any public comments tonight, so on to Dr. Norrell.
Oh.
Oh, we do have a hearing, that's right. Just I was so thrilled with these public comments, I just moved right along here. Yes, okay, let's go into the public hearing first.
Okay, Lisa, is that me? Just to kind of walk it through. Okay, Board of Education and Community, tonight, we have a state-required hearing, and the hearing is to offer any comments or discussion or questions you may have about the driver's education waiver for the behind-the-wheel time. There are a couple different types of driver's education or PE waivers. This PE waiver is strictly for driver's ed. And all waivers need to go to the legislators in the state of Illinois. And so, this is not a new waiver, that the district has had this for some years now, and it's one that we submit formally every five years for approval. So, we were trying to get, we were supposed to get into the spring legislative session, but we were a little delayed because it fell off the radar, and so we're just bringing it now, so that we'll be in plenty of time for the next legislative session. And essentially, this is just saying that we want to make use of the district's purchased simulators for driver's ed. And many districts of our surrounding neighborhood, neighbor, and community have simulators. I know that District 204 utilizes some of that as well. So, we would simply be having students do less actual behind-the-wheel, because we would be able to make use of the simulators, which the real benefit in that is to our students and parents, in that we get more kids through driver's education because of our volume than we could without using that that the district had purchased. So, we've already purchased and acquired them. This is just a formality, if you will, and an opportunity to refresh the board and everyone on the fact that we use simulators. So, are there any questions about use of simulators for counting towards some of the behind-the-wheel training time before they sit for their driver's license test? Okay. And there was no public comment, so, all right, that's it.
Okay.
Public discussion.
All righty. So, we are, we are done with that, so Secretary, call the roll for motion to adjourn.
Can I first and second?
I'll move, make the motion. Second.
Okay, call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Barrero.
Yes.
Schubert.
Yes.
Sepuentes.
Yes.
Olivas.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're on to our regular Board of Education meeting, so please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. No. Wait a minute. It's all roll call. Okay.
Schubert.
Here.
Sepuentes.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Barrero.
Here.
Olivas.
Here.
Arroyo. Absent. LaShay. Absent.
All righty, now we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the great republic which stands one nation under God, equal and liberty, justice for all. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we, we do not have any public comments, so on to Communications from the Superintendent, Dr. Norrell.
Okay, good evening, Board of Education again, and Community members. The first item that I would just like to entertain any discussion on is the proposal for the strategic plan. We, our current strategic plan expires at the end of this calendar year, and we want to start the process of being able to work through and organize, in an organized fashion, while we still take into consideration and active participation all of our various stakeholders in our education community. So, we want to, we wrote a proposal to work with the CEC as our vendor for the strategic planning process for this time. And that process outlined a three-phase process that would, out of all of the different potential vendors, that we kind of checked around and found out who was, which districts were utilizing different vendors, and vendors that we know have been doing this work for some time. The thing that really got us to want to propose this particular entity, other than the fact that they have supported the district over the last six years in many different efforts, everything from evaluation, training, to us really being able to work with them on working relationships, and a part of their board and their leadership actually are national leaders of the AFT, which obviously, we are an IFT school district, so that was definitely appealing. But for this process in particular, we were, and I shared this with Becky last week, we were very motivated to work with them, because in addition to having a stakeholder group that actually is a part of the planning process, and on the planning team that gets together to drill through the data, to actually formulate priority standards and goals for the strategic initiatives of the district going forward, they also, in between each phase, they manage sending out surveys to each of the stakeholder groups, namely, our, our staff in the district, and asking them for their feedback, written feedback, on each of the things that that stakeholder internal core group has planned, they ask for feedback. So, we get together, we plan, then they survey and send out what we have thus far, and then following that, they gather all the data, bring it back to the core group, and then we have another meeting. And then whatever we do then, then they send out something, and they seek feedback, so that even if you're not in the room, you don't have to blindly trust those that are representing you in the, in the room unless you choose to. And so, it's not just from those who are representative in the room, but it's also an opportunity for them to have direct feedback. And there is no other program or format that I've seen that engages in that, and I feel like that's powerful. And, and she did share that piece was powerful as well. So, that is why we are recommending this proposal, and it definitely is in line with the cost. Actually, it's the same cost that we paid six years ago, so, for a different vendor. So, we are not, we are actually look to be saving a little with this.
What is the timetable within this group?
We would be looking to do the pre-meeting, that phase where it's the readiness meeting in July, later July, beginning of August, and then we'd be ready to start the engagement process in August or early September. We've got to kind of work out the timeline with their schedules, and then with us, obviously, opening school, but we would look to start it no later than September, and then they anticipate will be done definitely by, before the new year, so that we could roll this out similarly to what we did in 2019. We were done January, February-ish, if you'll remember, and then we rolled out our plan so that we could spend the entire spring with each school, having an opportunity to really expose the new plan or the new goals to their school leadership teams, SLTs, so that they could be ready to start their FY25 school, I'm sorry, FY26 school year with the new plan. But it takes us being done by January, February, for them to be able to really put some attention to it all spring. It's too fast to ask them to do it over a summer, and people are gone on vacation. So, that is the timeline that we're hoping to move toward, is starting our process this fall, early fall, and then culminating it by December.
Many organizations that we look at besides this one, I know you said that we went, we didn't go with the one we went a few years ago.
Right.
Any do we actually look at?
You know, I didn't bring it in front of me to be total, and, and my mind, my memory's not what it used to be, but I could certainly share that with you. But I do know immediately that we did look at the process we went through with American Institutes for Research last time, but then I can bring the other ones, and I won't put my executive cabinet on the spot, but they probably know. Sorry.
Yeah, Dr. Norrell, the last time we went through this exercise, we had revisited the mission and the vision of the district, is that, and then we, you know, developed the strategic goals off of that.
Yep.
Are we revisiting the mission as well, or are we just looking at the strategic goals that are going to be supporting the mission of the district, or are we doing a whole revamp of?
Right, with strategic planning, the board has the opportunity to decide what you'd like to do. So, part of the readiness Phase One will be us articulating to them what the board's desires are in terms of, do you want to revisit the whole thing, or do you really want to? What I've preliminarily shared with them is that we are interested in using data from all of the different divisions to really be able to have a first discussion about where we are as far as, what were the things we said we wanted to do in 2018, 1819, and then how far have we moved the needle on each of those things that we talked about before, and what data do we have to back that up? And then, where are the additional shortcomings that we want to focus on going forward? So, we would really be looking at our pillars that we have currently as it relates to data, to be able to have that first conversation about, did we address those things? Because remember, each of the pillars has corresponding worthy targets and action steps that we wanted to take. So, did we accomplish those? And I think that's something that would be very useful for that core group to be able to take a look at. And then from there, I anticipate we, having the, they would lead us in the discussion and the process around, do we continue with this? If we met these targets, do we formulate new ones? Are they under the same pillars, or do we need to add some additional pillars? And so, that is where the discussion would go. But if we wanted them to take a look at mission, vision, as it relates to revamping it, we could. But certainly, what our current mission and vision is, it's going to drive the work of us analyzing the pillars. Yeah. So, basically, we'd answer the question, are the things that we do, are doing, is that on target? Are we addressing the mission and vision? I think that's critical.
All right. Well, I think it's very important that we, you know, engage in these services to come up with a plan. I remember working on, on the last, on the last one, and it was very, you know, a lot of data being thrown at us, a lot of information, but at the end of the day, we came up with a plan, and, you know, every meeting that we have, every agenda item is connected to the plan somehow, to one of the pillars. It's very helpful to keep us on track. And, and the presentations that were given the last couple of meetings relative to how we did it with the plan, you know, that was very insightful to see, you know, recapping all, all the work that's been done, you know, in the district as a result of that plan. So, I think I'm looking forward to what this new plan will bring.
Yeah.
Very interesting. So, it would be the same type of format we followed the last time, in a sense?
Yep, very, very similar, except we would have an opportunity for everyone that wasn't in the room on those core, in the core team, which was a pretty large team. We had external partners. We, you know, we included, obviously, representation from everybody that was internal, but it would be an opportunity for other people to give feedback, and that was highly appealing because, again, we're really working on a lot of what our focus is, is culture and climate, and the more people feel like they can contribute, the greater impact that I feel like, I think that sends a strong message that there's value even if you're not in the room. So, so I, so that's, that was the appealing piece of this.
Sounds like a plan. Okay.
So, do you need a consensus, or?
Yeah, just a consensus to move forward, and then I will bring it back for action. This was the first time that you were seeing it, so I didn't want to put it on for action. I wanted you to be able to ask questions and see the full proposal, and then next time, I can bring it back for action, and we can have a readiness meeting if, if, if you want to move in that direction. And then, obviously, each of you can share with me, you know, what your thoughts are about something that you really want to do, you know, how do you want to recap mission and vision, those kinds of things, is very flexible. So, I'd be able to try to incorporate, like last time, what board members really wanted to prioritize between now and when we got started. So, we'll bring it back at the next board meeting as an action item. This was just a chance for you to read it and ask questions.
Okay. That's great.
Okay, thanks. Okay. The next item is just letting everyone know our theme for this year. We're super excited. Our theme for this year is thriving for excellence from the inside out. And normally, we unveil the theme in the letter that I send out a couple weeks into July, and then inviting everyone to our red and black festive opening of school celebration, which will be on the 19th in the afternoon. And I'm going to look back at the union. It will not be out, so you won't have to melt, because we know guaranteed it's going to be 98 degrees if we plan to have it at River's Edge. So, we're going to keep it at East High, where it's nice and air-conditioned, and I think having our just festive afternoon food truck, some desserts, just some fellowship time, people liked that last year, that was the feedback, so that's what we're going to do. But the reason that I share the theme early this year is because we are super excited in the way that we can really connect this to the work of culture and climate. When you talk about thriving for excellence, I think the staff in this district over the past six years has done an exceptional job, really focused over the last five years on the strategic plan, and really going after. Our SLTs have done an exceptional job at every building led by our building principals to really be able to go through a common set of data. They come to the board every year, and they report out, and they have pictures, and they have examples, and they're very organized, and it's very connected, and that has not been easy work. And what we have heard consistently is, yes, we're doing great things, and we're moving the kids, but we really need to take some time to slow down, to look at the health and wellness of the adults, and we also need to do some things differently where, as it relates to behavior of our kids. And this isn't an East Aurora thing, this is children all across the US. It's really becoming a greater need. So, we are really going to put a pause and take an emphasis on teaching better behaviors and having consistent ways to engage with children. Everything that we've done consistently as a district in the last five years, we've been able to make a great change. I think about what we've said, you know, looking at East High with regards to physical altercations, 80% reduction in, in that. And even though sometimes we see those spike, spike, it's when we have changed what we said we were going to do. So, this year, we had some bumps in the road in the beginning half of the year, we made some unbeknownst to us, and we saw the ramifications from that. But when we hold consistent with, these are the expectations, then our kids rise to the occasion, and we see dramatic results. And so, I think I've heard from our staff that we really, in our, in our administration and leadership, that we really want to start to address our social emotional side. So, our theme is, our shirts that we have, EA is EQ, right? So, we talk about being emotionally intelligent, and how do we teach young people that there's value in all of their feelings? So, you're going to hear that a lot this year. We're not going to backburner quality education, but we're going to put some more emphasis and focus on our children being, you know, ready to go and take on the world, but knowing how to read the room, knowing how to behave, knowing how to respect adults. And again, this is not an EA thing, believe me, it is a nationwide thing. I think it's just a Gen Z or whatever generation they are thing. It's just, uh, it's been interesting for us. And so, so that is our theme. We also are going to build upon the new movie that's out now, Inside Out 2. I don't know if you saw Inside Out 1, highly recommend Inside Out 2, and our cabinet members all have an assignment to watch that, and there's quite a good message. And we feel like it's now that they have part two, which is the teen years. It's a pre-K through 12th grade theme, and it's really a cute way of trying to build upon dealing with emotions and giving validations to emotions, whether you're in pre-K or whether you are an adult in the system. And the, the moral, without giving away too much of the story, is really about how you have to value all of your emotions to be able to really be a whole person and complete person. So, you're going to have fear and anxiety and disgust and all of those things. And so, it's a really simple way for us to move how we're going to move this year. And I did share all of this with Becky Raro. I have not shared this with Merle and the SEIU stewards yet, but I think I shared it with Mr. Moore, too. So, the IFT kind of knows it's coming, some of the leadership. I can't see Jennifer Gentile's face, but we're going to meet Wednesday. But I think, you know, we make light of it, but we need to deal with that, and addressing, you know, trauma-informed practices and all of that. We're really going to need to put some emphasis on that as a system. So, I know that's a long explanation, but I think if this is where all of us are focused, the board needs to know we're going there, we are going there like 100%. So, that is going to be our focus for this year coming up. Any questions on that? To the board members, should I go see the Inside Out? Super cute.
We didn't pick a theme yet, though.
Oh, no, our phrase, right, yeah, we're going to work on it. Well, just, just, you know, Inside Out. Thriving for excellence. So, the next item is really a discussion item. It has come, it come, came up as a request from a graduate of East High, and I just wanted to throw this out. One of our graduates, he is getting ready to have his 10-year celebration at UConn. Ryan Boatright is going to be celebrated as the, the team that actually won March Madness for that, for that year, for the finals, and they were, they were the winners, 10, it'll be 10 years. And he mentioned that part of his teammates on that UConn team, their high schools are retiring their jerseys. And so, as I talked to the board president about us having the possibility of doing such a thing to kind of recognize that particular individual, two other individuals came up as former Tomcats and as certainly individuals that I don't believe we've ever retired their jerseys, and they were in the elite professional athletics. So, Kurt Becker, who was on the Bears, and I believe he was the championship Bears, a member of the championship team, retiring jersey, perhaps that could be a part of our celebration if you choose to move forward. And then also Rodney Davis, I believe played for the Bulls as a free agent and maybe the Timberwolves. So, there are a couple of others that we would like to, we don't mind putting that together with our, our high school administration, our new athletic director, and doing something to acknowledge those graduates. Maybe as we kick off the sports season, we could do it this winter, as we, because it would be an indoor kind of jersey retiring. But what are your thoughts on that? I wanted to bring that up to see what you thought.
It'd be great to tie it in with the sports, football season or basketball season.
Yeah. That'd be great. So, maybe we could do two different ceremonies, celebrations, one, obviously, in football season, and we'd have two from basketball season. Okay? So, if you feel okay, we'll move forward with that, and we will recognize those Tomcats who excelled nationally in, in sports. Thank you. Number four is just an item. I know that the board had been waiting on our follow-up workshop, and we talked to Laura Martinez, who is the IASB rep for Kishawaki Region, and these are the dates that she has available. Two, I'm sorry, yeah, two of the dates would be evening dates, and one of the dates would be a Saturday date, I believe. So, we are looking at the two evening date options would be July 29th, which is a Monday at 6:00 PM, or August 12th, which would be a Monday at 6:00 PM. So, those are two Monday dates that she has available, or we could do a Saturday date, which is August 10th, and that could be at 9:00 or 10:00 AM, she has available. So, I just want to know so that we can get on her calendar. She books up so fast, as you saw. I had to tell Mr. LaShay that she was all booked when he, you know, for the entire month of June and all of July, but I'm going to get on her calendar, so if you wouldn't mind just giving me one of those three dates that we could do a board workshop, like an hour and a half, we could go through that as kind of a mid-year check-in point.
I vote for July.
July 29th?
Yes.
That's a Monday? Mr. Sepuentes, is that good for you? 29th? Mr. Schubert? Okay, Lisa, then we will book Monday, July 29th at 6:00 PM, and we will lock her in because she books up fast. All right, thank you. The last item is just a motion and action item, so that we could send this waiver request to the legislators for the fall or the spring session, wherever we could get on for that.
Okay. Motion to approve the driver's education waiver for behind-the-wheel time from the 2024-25 through 2028-29 school years.
So, move. Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll.
Barrero.
Yes.
Sepuentes.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schubert.
Yes.
Olivas.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda is listed.
So, move. Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll.
Schubert.
Yes.
Barrero.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olivas.
Yes.
Sepuentes.
Yes.
Okay, and we do have a couple introductions tonight.
Yes, we do. We have two introductions this evening. So...
We'll do introductions, then we'll do that, sorry.
So...
You can do Steve during the VNG.
First, we are pleased to reintroduce, but actually introduce, a new member, Mari Terry Wise, to our administrative team as the Assistant Principal at O'Donnell Elementary School. You have to stand through the whole thing, it's going to be 10, 15 minutes. Mari brings over 13 years of experience in early childhood education, notably all in District 131, with a strong focus on bilingual teaching and educational leadership. Mari Terry currently serves as an instructional coach at the ECC, and has served as an early childhood teacher in our district since 2011. Some of her accomplishments during this time include serving as a dual-language implementation committee member, where she played a crucial role in designing, collaborating, and revising the preschool programs' vision, mission, and collective agreements to best support the diverse preschool population. In addition, as a preschool instructional team member, she designed, implemented, and trained teachers on units of study approach using the Understanding by Design framework. And lastly, she served as an administrative intern at O'Donnell Elementary School, where she gained valuable administrative experience overseeing daily school operations, supporting social, emotional, and learning programs, and collaborating on the school improvement plan. Mari's academic achievements include a Master's of Education in Educational Leadership from North Central College, and a Bachelor of Arts in L and Early Childhood Education from Universidad de Puerto Rico. Welcome. Next, we are pleased to reintroduce Jackie Stone as the Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning at East Aurora High School. Jackie brings over 22 years of experience in education with a strong background in mathematics and educational administration. Jackie has most recently served as the Math and Business Department Chair at East Aurora High School, where she collaborated with staff and students, organized testing materials, and coached approximately 40 math and business teachers. In addition, Jackie has served as a professional learning consultant at the College Board, an academy leader for STEM at Rich High School, where she led the consolidation of campuses, including the creation of a new STEM engineering lab, and provided tutoring and support to students in need. Jackie has served as a math coach and collaborated with district math leadership teams to present workshops and improve student mathematical learning and understanding. Jackie holds a Master of Arts in Educational Administration from Governor State University, and a Bachelor of Science in Mathematics from Millikan University. Jackie, welcome and congratulations.
So, on to Finance and Personnel with Dan.
Good evening. The Finance and Personnel Committee met today, and our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 5th, 5:30 here, and we, I'll be reporting out the next meeting, what we discussed at today's committee meeting, but we do have one action item as a result of today's meeting, and that's under 10B1. And so, that is for the addition of three of floating, three full-time floating teacher assistant positions at Gate School, and this is in order to, to add one additional classroom for the, to meet the needs of the, of the students in the program. So, this is being voted on tonight under time constraints, so that they can get these slots filled before the beginning of the school year coming up. So, we are in need of, is there any questions on these? Okay, so, we'll need a motion in a second for, for, to approve three full-time equivalent floating teacher assistant positions for Gate School. equivalent floating teacher assistant positions for Gate School.
Some move. Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Schubert?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Okay, curriculum and programs with Juan.
Good evening, everyone. The curriculum and programs committee met on Monday, June 17th, here at the Administrative Center. We did have a couple of school improvement plans that were presented. Um, the first one was Gates Elementary School, and it was presented by Principal Isaías Martinez. Um, he re, he did report that at that time, um, 35.9% of students met their expected growth in map reading and English, and 39.2% met their expected growth in Spanish, um, for the 23-24 school year. And then for math, 51.6% of students met their expected, expected growth in map math. He also shared, um, along with, um, action steps to accomplish future goals that they set, um, and those goals were as follows. 60% of students K through 5 will meet or exceed their expected growth, um, goals in reading and math as measured by NWEA MAP. And then a second goal that they had was, uh, had to do with the daily average attendance of 95% or higher throughout the school year. And the third goal, uh, was to decrease major discipline referrals by 10% compared, compared to the previous school year. Um, we also had another school improvement plan that was presented by East High School, and that was presented by, uh, Principal Jennifer Mitchell, Assistant Principals Francisco de Santos and Jennifer Brinkman and Carla Williams. Some of the highlights, um, that they covered were, um, the highest number of EA students that have earned the SEAL by literacy. They also administered the highest, uh, number of AP exams. Um, and then we also continue to see an increase in the number of students who are taking advantage of the district's early college opportunity by taking classes at Wobanzie Community College. Some of the goals and action steps to accomplish, um, to be accomplished by the administration were to increase the graduation rate by 2%, increase freshmen on track by 2%, and design and prepare the block scheduling while also providing professional development during the school improvement days on, um, block scheduling. We also reviewed the 2024-2025 curriculum committee meeting dates, um, and Dr. Delacqua also shared the proposed assessment calendar for 2024-2025 school year. Principal Jennifer Mitchell also presented, um, the new course proposals for East High, and they are Computer Literacy 1 and 2. And with that, students also have the opportunity to take certification exams in such areas such as Word, Excel, PowerPoints, and Outlook. And, uh, she also shared that currently there is a math boost for freshmen, but wanted to expand that for all students who need additional support in math, and, uh, this would be connected to the math course that they are actually taking. The other two courses that were proposed were Broadcasting Technology 2 and Blueprint Reading, and the proposed cost would be $5,299 for the CertiPoint Microsoft Office Suite Certification. Moving on, Dr. Delacqua at that time also shared a resolution for disposal of personal property, pre-K curricular materials that are outdated, um, and also shared enrollment and district average attendance. We do have two action items, um, unless anybody has any questions at the moment. All right. So moving on to the first one, um, 11 point B point 1, motion to approve the CertiPoint Microsoft Office Prudential Student Licenses for East High School in the amount of $5,299.
Some move. Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Olivas?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
The second motion, um, is for the, uh, disposal of personal property, 11 point B point 2, motion to approve the resolution for disposal of personal property, pre-K curricular materials.
Some move. Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
All right, the next curriculum and programs committee will meet on Monday, July 15th at 6:00 PM here at the Administrative Center, and that concludes my report.
Okay, so now we are on to buildings and grounds, and also Mr. Bagazidi can do his.
Well, I'll go through this first, the official business, then we can, uh, do our show and tell. So, um, the committee met this evening, will meet again on the 5th of August at 6:00 PM here at the Administrative Center. Um, we do have one action item for this evening, um, and I'll go through that now. It's item 12B1. I need a motion to approve the purchase of office furniture for the Jump Start Preschool Program at Johnson Elementary School from Ford Space through the Omnia Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of $59,591.53.
Some move.
I have a question before we move on. Um, I know we were talking earlier about the, uh, purchasing of the just the furniture, and, uh, when we talked a little bit about this, um, um, I, I talked about the bathroom in room 201 has, I know that was a storage before, it wasn't really working, the door was, that was five years ago, but I just want to make sure that that's, because it's not mentioned, just, it was just the furniture, but I just want to make sure that the bathroom in that room is workable, because it was not when I was there. So I just want to make sure that, and that was five years ago, that was my storage space, so I just want to make sure that that bathroom is currently working or has been fixed, because I know it wasn't when I was, that was my classroom.
And we took, want me to answer that now? Yeah, yeah. Um, we, we took, uh, and I'm looking at Steve, we took a tour, and I know that some of those spaces, and as said, have been renovated. So the only one, that wing that they're primarily going to be in, that's all been upgraded. There were renovations done in that room when the air conditioning was being done. But there is one room, and that's the room where we do the modeling and things with parents, that's a little bit further back down the hall where, um, that it does have the old bathroom still. So I'm not sure which of those is 501. The both of the rooms, because there's three rooms, two of them are going to be, um, have been already, um, fixed. The only thing that they would need will be extra cost, but minimal, is our architect said they would need to put the changing, um, spaces in all of those bathrooms, so those would be additional upgrades in cost. But the bathrooms, I know in two of the three rooms have been upgraded.
Yeah, because I think the ones, the, the ones in the front, the, that was part of the new addition for Johnson, so those bathrooms did work, they're newer, um, and the other section is the older version of that building. So I know it wasn't updated, but that was five years ago, so I don't know if there was any more stuff that has been updated on that.
I can, I will look into that and make sure that work.
The one only one is the older.
Sure.
Room 201.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, are we ready and move forward?
Second.
Actually, we have a, uh, do we need to vote on that? Um, have motion?
We've got the motion, okay. Call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Steve, you want to?
Yeah.
Roll out our, after long, uh, laborious, uh, debate at the Building and Grounds Committee, we have decided to pull all the computers out of our libraries and go back to the card catalog system. No, this is, this is, um, I had asked Steve to bring these for a show and tell, it kind of reminds me of, you know, grade school, but.
Okay, so, um, we talked about, uh, this is a sample of what we are going to be getting for the cell phone lockers. Um, it's actually going to have 34 slots, so it'll be, you know, probably double the size of this. So I know that, um, this Mitchell is looking around to, and they're working with the staff at the high school as to where they're going to go in the classrooms. But basically, um, we are going to be using this particular locking key here, so these are just other samples of things that we are not going with. And the key will be in the lock, the student opens up, puts their cell phone in here, there's plenty of space, in case they have two or three, like. And then, and then they will be able to just take their key in the classroom, they'll be going through class, and then when they leave, they'll just put the key in, open up and grab their, their, uh, phone. If, I can't imagine it, but if someone loses their, their key, the teacher will have a master key that will open up each individual, but that she also, they also have an opportunity to open up the whole slot, and then they can get their cell phones out. So, but we're hoping and, uh, looking at, really the teacher will have the master key just in emergency. But this is basically what it looks like.
Okay.
Steve, are those keys going to have some kind of lifespan for the students?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
That's a good question.
The other piece is that they will also be numbered, again, this is just a sample, but they'll be numbered, so then the key will line up to the number. Need, any questions on that?
No.
No, thanks for bringing it, Steve. And this is, again, just for the high school and the, um, middle schools.
Eighth grade.
Yeah, eighth grade.
To start.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. That is interesting.
And just so you, you know, I want to say this publicly, I think I shared with the board, but Peoria School District, which is one of the Luda districts, one of the large unit districts in Illinois, um, they just went to yonders, so they're not going to have access to their cell phones all day. They did it district-wide, yonders for the whole district. And Steve also read recently, the state of New York is looking to go the entire state, another state to fold, so it's coming. So we have the more link.
Okay.
But I also, you know, I, I also think it's listening to the community. I mean, you reached out to our community, which is, you know, every community is different, and our community is very connected, so with their, with their students and the students with their families. So I think this is a very well-thought-through plan for our district.
Very.
Versus the yonder system.
One way or the other, yes. Parents draw us to the middle.
So thank you for, you know.
It'll, it'll still have it further.
Yeah, it will. Oh, absolutely. During instruction, that's what we care about.
We are definitely cutting edge again.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, well, that's great. Okay, so, motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Some move. Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Schubert?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Sepuentes?
Yes.
I have a three-minute update.
Forward.
Yes.
Barrero?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Lower. Here we go.
We have two minutes, we're going to make it.
Motion to reconvene for executive session.
Some move?
Second.
Secretary Calderon?
Barrero?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Barrero?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Okay. Two minutes is fair, we beat eight o'clock. For the record, 7:58. Woo, thank goodness.
All right.